City Council Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted with the Committee in the Whole, met on Wednesday, June 8th, 2022, at 6:29 PM. For the purpose of discussing the fiscal year 2023 operating budget and capital improvement plans of $405,000 appropriation from retained earnings, water and sewer for the FY 2023 CIP projects and the PEG Access Enterprise Fund. Members of the public may attend in person remotely or via Zoom by going to the website link noted below. Click the link and use the password 175380 or go to the website zoom.us/join, enter the webinar ID number 897-84673401, followed by the meeting password above the directive to do so, or telephone. Participants can dial a toll-free number, 877-853-5257, or 888-4754499. When prompted, enter the meeting/webinar ID 897-84673401 and follow the instructions to join the meeting. For those dialing in, you may press *9 to raise your hand to speak if signed up for public testimony to participate in the public hearing portion of the agenda if applicable. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we have, that we are unable to do so on matters not requiring public hearing, we will post in the City of Salem's website an audio and/or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Persons requiring auxiliary aids and services for effective communications such as sign language interpreter and assistive listening device, or print material in digital format, or reasonable modification in program services policies or activities may contact the City of Salem ADA Coordinator, 897-86195630, as soon as possible and no less than two business days before the meeting program or event. The agenda for this evening will be fiscal year 2023 operating capital budgets, FY 2023 water and sewer CIP bond order, FY 2023 general fund CIP bond order, budget transfers out, revolving funds, and a five-year capital improvement plan projects, and the $405,000 appropriation from retained earnings, water, sewer for the FY 2023 CIP projects, and PEG Access Enterprise Fund. City Council Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted with the Committee in the Whole, met in council chambers on June 8th, 2022, at 6:30 PM. For the purpose of discussing the matters listed below, notice this meeting was posted on June 6, 2022, at 10:53 AM. Currently, all members of the committee are present. We have Councilor Watson felt remotely. Good evening, Councilor. We also have with us tonight Councilor Massillo, Councilor Ricardi, Councilor Cohen, and Councilor Varela. Also with us tonight is the Finance Director and the Engineering/ DPS Jack-of-all-traits Director. So with us tonight, we're going to jump right in. So Anna, if you could, or Dave, if you would, I guess we're going to go, we'll go right in order, FY 23 operating capital budgets. Is that what I have?
Mr. Chair, the first item I have is five-year CIP.
We can do that.
That's tab seven, page 265.
Tab seven, 265.
The other, the other orders that are in front of the council tonight sort of comprise the appropriations that roll up to that five-year capital plan. The five-year capital plan that begins on page 265 also includes other items that are not necessarily appropriated as part of this process, but we wanted to show all of the, this is one thing that we tried to kind of enhance here was to show all funding sources for all capital projects across, across the community. So for the, the five-year capital plan, the appropriations for general fund debt for new bond authorizations, water and sewer, new bond authorizations, and the, there is an appropriation for retained earnings for water and sewer. And then I believe tomorrow night, there is an appropriation for what we call our short-term capital fund, which is our pay-as-you-go capital fund that's funded by free cash every year. Those are the appropriations that roll up into the amounts that are in the highlighted column for the FY 23 capital plan. The columns that note future need are, and for the committees and anyone else who is following along in their budget online, that column, and I'm actually going to have that moved to the far end of the table because it is intended to be something where we have not yet identified a funding source, but we're sort of tracking the need for a future year. The columns that say FY 24, 25, 26, and 27 are preliminary projections of the amounts that would be needed that year. You may note that for some projects that we are requesting to be authorized this year, we're showing that those may be annually funded, that we would propose that those would continue to be annually funded in the future. Some projects may not, may be a one-time project, so you wouldn't see additional costs noted in future years, but we wanted to make sure that we were showing for planning purposes the out-years for all of the projects. And so the, the only thing that is finalized, and we tell this to, we tell this to departments when they make their request, that if they see something in a column that says a future year, that does, that's not guaranteed, that is for planning purposes so that we can look, roll everything up together and see what the city's needs are for capital planning purposes.
So, does anyone have a question? So, I guess the first question I would be have is when we do go to move for the total, which, on which page are we looking for the exact, I mean, I know we've, as they've come through, we've gone through, each department has come through, they've talked briefly about, you know, what plans they have in place and what they're hoping for.
I can, I can give you the total in one moment. The total will be the total of the general fund bond authorization, the water and sewer bond authorization, the, the appropriation for the retained earnings, and then the total for the short-term capital, which I believe is on for tomorrow night, so I can give you that total in one moment. Mr. Chair, I just got some clarity to make sure that we're, we're helping to explain the, the proposed action. So my understanding is that the committee typically, the council typically would vote to accept the plan in general, and then the individual amounts are then done via the individual orders. So I can give you the total for the five-year capital plan is on page 273. That does include other things that, you know, that does include future, there are future amounts there, and it does also include things like, like grants and other sources of funding that aren't typically appropriated, but the totals can be found on page 273, just for the edification of the committee and others online.
So the first, the first item we're going to take up is the five-year, is that correct? Which one did you want to take up first?
I think it may be helpful to individually take up the, the bond orders and then the, the appropriation for the retained earnings, since those roll up into the overall plan. I think, not aware that the council typically votes on a number for the overall plan, but individually votes the items that must be appropriated, such as borrowing authorizations. So the, the first item I would recommend reviewing is the appropriation for the, is the authorization for general fund bonds. This total, this total bond authorization would be $5,745,000.
Could you repeat that number one more time?
Yes, $5,745,000. And I can list off the, the items that have been identified to be most appropriately funded through new debt. We try to identify items that are either multi-year or just a substantial cost that would, may not, maybe too, too much to fund out of pay-as-you-go capital. So the items that are included on here are the, the bucket truck for the electrical department, a number of projects at engineering, including Boston Street Complete Upgrade Design, McGrath Park Soils Remediation, the, the non-chapter 90 supplement that the city provides for citywide roads, sidewalks, and crosswalk improvements, the transfer station cleanup phase-two capping, the police department flooring replacement, the utility truck for public services, DPS building project, a front loader, which is a vehicle. And then there are three, sorry, four projects at the school, and I know the school has not been in front of the committee yet to review their capital items, but there are four projects for the school, the Bates envelope repair project, Collins Roof Masonry Repair, School Life Safety, MEP Utility Roof Repairs Upgrades and Studies, and District-Wide Sprinkler Repairs. And then the last project is at the Sustainability Department, which I believe was discussed last night, the Comprehensive Energy and Water Upgrades at the city and school, at city and school facilities. And again, the total is $5,745,000 for those projects.
I'm just checking, that's the same number that's going to appear on the agenda for tomorrow, morning?
For the general fund bond items? The agenda that I, I should pull up the agenda, I have the schedule.
I'm pulling up right now.
Yeah, just to, I thought it was on tonight, but I wonder if some of this may be, I don't know if it's possible to continue it to tonight, to tomorrow, potentially if the committee has questions on the school items, since we haven't reviewed those yet.
I mean, because the, in order to approve a general fund bond order, I mean, the committee would just move to recommend to the full council, the full council will require money matters like that would be roll call vote, so I just want to make sure it's the same number, that's all. Second, anyone else have any questions relative to this? I'm like, okay, where are the bond orders? They first, they must be the last. I apologize. Okay. So as long as, that's the way they, as long as that's the way they're going to appear on the agenda, that's fine. I just want to double check, because the last thing, we'll be taking special votes and have special meetings before Fourth of July in order to get it passed, so people get paid come July 1. All right, so front of us is the general fund bond order for the committee for tonight. It would be a recommend, which would be, if someone would make a recommendation to move that total in the amount of $5,745,000 to the full council for a vote tomorrow night when we approve. If no one has any questions. Council McLean.
Thank you, Chair. Motion to recommend approval of the general fund bond order in the amount of $5,745,000.
Seconded by Councilor Hapworth. Councilor Watson felt, are you good with that? Thank you. All those in favor? All as opposed? Let the record reflect itself, four hands plus my own. What's next?
Next up is the water and sewer bond authorization. So this would authorize four projects for the water fund and four projects for the sewer fund. They include, the total of this order is $3,600,000, and I have the agenda in front of me for tomorrow night, and that, that does match. The projects included on this order include the Pioneer Village Relocation and Expanded Facility Phase One, sewer, water, stormwater for $100,000, citywide flushing valve repair maintenance, leak detection, GIS for $400,000. And then there are a couple annual, typically annual appropriations that are made for water distribution main system improvements. That one's $800,000 proposed for next year, and water transmission main system improvements, and that's $1 million. Over in sewer, there's $100,000 for the Palmer Cove Park Drain Outfall Installation of Stormwater Treatment. And then there is, this one is also, I believe, an annual, typically annual project, citywide drain and sewer cleaning, inspection, replacement, engineering, GIS, and construction for $400,000. Pioneer Village Relocation and Expanded Facility Phase One, sewer, water, stormwater, that's $200,000. There's a, there's a water component of that and a sewer component of that, so that's why those are the same. And then there's the SSES report implementation, eliminate II sources citywide, and that's $600,000. I believe that is not necessarily every year, but that does happen frequently every year. And so again, the total there is $3,600,000.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on it? Mr. Nolton, is that, is those reflected in your capital program that we talked about earlier?
Yes, those are all reflected in that, yeah.
So they're, they're in the prior pages in tab seven. Remember talking about them a week and a half ago now? Seems like it. Anyone else have any questions? Seeing none on the bond, bond order for water and sewer in the amount of $3,600,000, is that correct? Make a motion, please. Council McLean.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the water and sewer bond order in the amount of $3,600,000.
Council McLean moves to approve the water and sewer bond order in the amount of $3,600,000, seconded by Councilor Hapworth. All those in favor? All as opposed? Let the record reflect itself, four hands plus my own. You're in charge, Anna, tonight.
Next up is the requested transfer from the water and sewer retained earnings. This would fund three projects. The water and sewer retained earnings, which is basically the, an enterprise version of free cash, the current balance in the water and sewer retained earnings is a little over $3.2 million. And so we're proposing, rather than adding these additional projects to the, the order that the, that the committee just recommended, that these be funded out of retained earnings, which will help mitigate future increases to the rates for residents. So the three projects we're recommending be funded out of retained earnings are the Point Area Neighborhood Catch Basin Screening and Improvements for $100,000, the Derby Street Interceptor Sewer Cleaning and Evaluation for $125,000, and a replacement of a water sewer utility truck for $180,000. And the total proposed transfer is $405,000, and I do see it on the agenda for the same amount for tomorrow.
Excellent. Dave, is that my favorite catch basin on Derby Street? The one that goes underneath the building?
Yes, absolutely. It's looking at all the Derby Street, the, it's a, we have a 48-inch brick interceptor sewer that goes through that area, and we'll be looking to start to investigate that, just to make sure it's in good shape and it's going to, it's going to last, it's sound. Likely if we have to do improvements, we'll do lining, but, so we'll get us started on that.
Thank you. Anyone else? If there's no one else, the transfer from the water and sewer retained earnings, the motion would be to transfer money from water and sewer retained earnings in the amount of $405,000, is that correct? I see a motion. Once again, that is from our conversations earlier with, that was to offset the cost of raising water and sewer rates, partially. Thank you. Okay. Council McLean, sorry.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of transfer from the water and sewer retained earnings in the amount of $405,000.
The Council McLean moves to, motion to transfer money from the water and sewer retained earnings in the amount of $405,000, seconded by Councilor Hapworth. All those in favor? All as opposed? The matter carries? Let the, we'll let the record reflect itself, four hands plus my own, the matter carries. Okay, Anna?
So I believe those are all of the capital plan-related specific appropriations that are on the agenda that was posted for tonight. Tomorrow, there is the appropriation of $3,78,020 to transfer from the short term, to appropriate in the short-term capital improvement plan, but I believe that's on for tomorrow. So I believe, as it relates to capital, the only thing that would remain for this evening would be if the committee were to choose to accept in whole the five-year CIP.
My guess, on my agenda, I have the PEG Access Enterprise.
Yes, and I have those that are, for non-CIP, I have revolving funds, budget transfers out, and the PEG Enterprise Fund, just to make sure I have the same.
Okay. So you want to take those up now?
Sure.
Yep.
So for the revolving funds, which for the, for the committee, in your budget book, the revolving funds, tab three, at the very beginning of your book, on page 63, there is a list, and then the order basically is just a copy and paste of that list. And so the revolving funds annually must be authorized by council vote. If they're not reauthorized, their balance, any balances in the fund would close out. And so the list, the list in the book on page 63, tab three, would be to propose to authorize the funds shown there. There are no new funds for this year. One thing that has changed is that there used to be school funds that were included on this list, but under Mass General law, that actually does not need to be included, and so we cleaned that up for this year. But the rest of these funds, I believe the, there are very few changes, and happy to take any questions if there are questions on specific funds or questions in general about what revolving funds are, or why we, why we must, why this authorization must occur.
Could you just give the five-second over of what a revolving fund is, and so people, so people can understand?
A revolving fund is intended to be set up as a fund that is standalone, self, ideally self-sustaining. It should take in programmatic revenues that are directly related to the expenditures that happen with those revenues. The, the vote that the, the vote to authorize these funds authorizes an expenditure ceiling. And so the amounts that you see on the far-right column, that, that means that those, those funds expenditures cannot be made in excess of the amounts there. So if, if those funds, and they're supposed to only bring it, make expenditures in line with what comes in, so even if, even if $40,000 is authorized and they only bring in $20,000, they really should only be spending $20,000. These funds, they don't function the same way that the general fund does, and so they can remain open, they, based on their name, they're revolving funds, and so it helps to address where programs might have timing issues, where purchases need to be made at a certain time. So it allows those funds to carry over year over year to help pay for program, for programs that are, fees generated from programs, then pay for those associated programs, basically.
Thank you. Basically, it allows the store at Winter Island to act as a store.
Yep.
At the end of the year, as long as they function correctly, there should be money left, so they should be able to keep selling t-shirts, whatever it is they're doing.
Revolving funds are allowed to retain, they're allowed to retain their earnings, basically, the, the, if they bring in more than they have spent for some reason, they are allowed to retain that balance, and so it can help them when fiscal years are changing over. Should they ever actually spend more than what they bring in, the general fund does clean that up, and that hits our free cash.
We have a number we're going to approve with that, or we're just going to approve?
Apologies.
The list and the number?
The total is $1,518,000.
Anyone have any questions about revolving funds? Someone care to make a motion? Council McLean? Only because you moved. Council Hapworth didn't move. The, the list and the total, you can just say the revolving funds listed and the total. We're not adding any new ones this year, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to recommend approval of all of the listed revolving funds and their, and their total amount in the amount of $1,518,000.
Council McLean moves to approve the total for the revolving funds listed in the amount of $1,518,000, seconded by Council Hapworth. All those in favor? All as opposed? Let the record reflect itself, four hands plus my own. It's Freeman, you're still up.
Hey. So perhaps next, maybe the, the PEG Enterprise Fund, if that's okay, Mr. Chair, that one might be.
Yep, whichever way you want to go.
Let's see. So that would be, I neglected to write down the page number for that. Bear with me one moment while I pull that one up. That is in the, should be in, actually, that's in the section eight with the departmental budgets, and I believe it is tab 10 at the back of the solicitors' budget.
Yeah, it was in the.
Yes, yeah, we inadvertently missed that one the other day. I believe it's tab 10.
Yes.
Okay.
It's on page 819.
So for those that are, for those that are unfamiliar with what a PEG Enterprise Fund is, it is a Cable Television Public Educational and Governmental Access Special Fund. And so very summarized, very succinctly, these are, it functions as a pass-through where per the city's agreement with Comcast, it's, you know, it's franchise cable agreements, we bring in money that then we turn around and send directly out to SATV. And so the reason this is set up as an enterprise fund is because under Mass General law, the, there's a preference that we set it up in this manner for reporting purposes. And so this fund basically functions as a pass-through. So the money comes in pursuant to that agreement, and then we turn around and quarterly make payments out to SATV. So it's, it's a very sort of technical, it's a sort of technical financial arrangement. I'm happy to go much deeper on that if there are any specific questions.
Is it my one curious question with this one is why, why is it in the solicitor's budget?
I think because of the licensing component.
Okay.
Yep, and the agreement, yep.
Council McLean.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm actually going to ask you to just repeat that whole explanation.
So, and I actually brought the general law with me here, which I don't think is, I think it's generally helpful to kind of read through. So the, the fund, the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund, we are able to deposit funds received in connection with a franchise agreement between a cable operator and the municipality. Monies in the fund shall only be appropriated for cable-related purposes consistent with the franchise agreement, and that includes things like support of public educational or governmental access cable television services, monitoring compliance of the cable operator with the franchise agreement, or preparing for renewal of the franchise license. So the way that ours is set up is that when the funds come in, we turn around and send those funds right out to SATV to support their programming and the costs associated with, with their operations to deliver the, to deliver cable access to the community. And the reason it's set up as an enterprise fund is just for the purposes of tracking those funds coming in and coming out, because it's, the DOR has determined that it, the fund should be segregated in that manner, so we can keep track of that to make sure what's coming in is going out appropriately.
Great, thank you. That last part answered my main question, which is why isn't it just with the rest of the revolving funds? Thank you.
Anyone else? Council Merkel. We're going to jump right in. Because only.
Thank you.
There you go.
Chair McCarthy, I motion to recommend approval of the Solicitor and Licensing Board PEG Access Budget in the amount of $691,250.
Council Merkel moves to approve the PEG Access Fund in the amount of $691,250, seconded by Councilor Hapworth. All those in favor? All as opposed? Matter carries, Councilor Merkel. Got to read it again, unfortunately.
Yes, thank you. I motion to approve, to approve the Comcast PEG Access Enterties expense total of $691,250.
Council Merkel further moves to approve the departmental total for the PEG Access in the amount of $691,250, seconded by Council Hapworth. All those in favor? All as opposed? The matter carries. Let the record reflect itself, four hands plus my own. Okay, Anna?
Already, I think, I think the last item is the general fund transfers out, which is in tab 27, within that same departmental tab in your books. So there are two proposed transfers out. They are level funded with last year. One of the transfers is for $600,000 to the Retirement Stabilization Fund. The Retirement Stabilization Fund is an extremely financially sound concept that many other cities and towns do not have, that Salem has. So the Retirement Stabilization Fund, which you likely are all aware of, is what we, we capitalize in order to pay out retirees who have sick leave, vacation buyback, et cetera, so that. cetera, so that individual departmental lines don't need to absorb those variable costs year over year, and so that we can, uh, when we do the budget for departmental, uh, salary lines, we can budget based on also living adjustments and collective bargaining agreements, and we don't need to worry about in their individual lines, how much someone may be getting paid out when they retire. And so the Retirement Stabilization Fund is capitalized annually through the budget process, and then during the year, if additional funds are needed, typically we would, um, come to the council to request any additional funds. And so, the $600,000 that is proposed is consistent with the amount that's been, um, funded at the beginning of every fiscal year. And then the other item, or I, I can pause there if there are any questions on that one before I speak about the other item.
My only question is, in my budget book, it's $650,000, did you say that?
Oh, it should be, uh, bear with me one second, let me just see if the total, how it displays here in one minute.
On page 752?
It's the, um, it's combining the two items there, and so there's, um, the transfer to the Retirement Stabilization, which is, uh, Fund 8311 is $600,000, and then there's a transfer to the Salem 2026 Fund for $50,000, so the total of those two is the $650,000.
So the way it's written in the book, we just have to approve the one total, we don't have to approve the two individually?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then other, before I move on to the Salem 2026 Fund, I just wanted to make sure there weren't any questions on that.
Nope.
And then the other one is the Salem 2026 Fund, which is, um, I think we've called it our birthday, the birthday fund, um, and so, uh, the, um, the budget for the past couple of years has included a transfer to capitalize that fund to prepare for, um, the Salem 2026. I believe the latest development there is that we have just hired a coordinator. I think the initiative was a little, a little bit slowed down during COVID-19, but things are ramping up full speed, and so that coordinator, I believe, just started recently. And so, um, those funds, that transfer is adding to monies that have been transferred in previous years to prepare for Salem 2026.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone have any questions about budget transfers out? Seeing none. Council Merkel.
Thank you, Chair McCarthy. I motion to approve, uh, the budget transfer out of general funds, uh, expenditures in the amount of $650,000.
Council Merkel moves to, uh, approve the, uh, the budget transfers out and the expenditures in the amount of $650,000, seconded by Council of Hapworth. All those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record reflect itself, four hands plus my own. Council Merkel.
Uh, thank you. I motion to approve, uh, the budget transfer out, a department total in the amount of $650,000.
Council Merkel further moves to remove the department total in the amount of $650,000, seconded by Council of Hapworth. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries, let the record reflect itself, four hands plus my own.
I believe that is, that those are all the items, unless there is a specific action that the committee typically takes in general to acknowledge the five-year CIP. I'm checking the language for the agenda for tomorrow, just to, to see how that typically is reported.
I mean, eh, to cover ourselves, we could, we could just be, take a motion to, uh, send to the full council a recommendation to.
Accept or?
Accept, uh, to however you want to word it.
Acknowledge, or maybe acknowledge, or?
Yeah. The committee acknowledges the, uh, 20, uh, FY23, uh, capital budget.
As part of the five-year capital plan.
As part of the five-year capital plan, and then we'll just, then we'll let the full council, because of that, I believe that's a roll call vote.
Yeah, yep.
So just to cover ourselves, to make sure, if you want to send it out that way. Someone make that motion to send out the, uh, recommendation, uh, recommendation for the, uh, capital plan? Council Hapworth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I recommend we approve, we recommend approval of the FY23 capital plan as part of the five-year capital plan.
Council Hapworth moves to approve the 20, FY23, uh, capital plan as part of the five-year plan, seconded by.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yeah.
So we don't actually approve the money, we're simply acknowledging the existence of this fund, is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is that correct? I don't want to speak out of turn.
And so the, there are elements of it that get specifically approved, and so those, uh, the, the bond orders and the transfers are the elements that are specifically approved, and then if there are other funding sources that are, are unappropriated funding sources, those would then be acknowledged as part of the overall plan.
So we're, we're approving the intent of the plan?
Exactly.
Basically.
Okay, but we're not, we're not approving anything that's sort of listed as a CIP fund source?
The, the items that say CIP fund, those would be, um, that's the short-term pay-as-you-go fund, and that item is on the, um, the committee's agenda tomorrow night.
Oh, it's a good question. I'll make sure, trust me, I want to make sure we all get it right. Council Missoula.
Thank you. So just to be clear, there's, there's four subtotals that will make up the $26,426,000.
So the, that $26 million number would also include things that are unappropriated, like types of grants, um, and, you know, receipts reserved and things like that, that wouldn't necessarily require appropriation, and so, the, the total that would be formally, sort of individually authorized by the council would be the, the, um, the general fund, um, general obligation bonds, which were $5,740,000, the water sewer bonds, $3,600,000, the retained earnings transfer, which was $405,000, and then tomorrow, um, I believe it's, I don't have it in front of me, I believe it's a little over $3 million in terms of the short-term capital, and so those, those components are, require official council action to effectuate.
Most of the short-term capital covers the, uh, the capital improvement plan for coming fiscal year.
Yes.
The other one, the other ones are just?
Yeah, they're.
Wide-range plans.
Yeah, the items that are.
Which are subject to change.
Exactly, the items that are, items that are in FY24 and beyond are, are simply, um, I don't want to use the word placeholders, but they're, they're planning, they're for planning purposes, and the only spending that's truly authorized is, are the spending that is from, that is in that column that says FY23, um, and then the ones that require specific council action are the, are the bonds and the transfers.
Anyone else have a question? Motion on the floor was, uh, by Council of Hapworth, was to, uh, approve the, uh, give, send to the full council a positive recommendation for the FY23 operating capital budgets for fiscal year '23, seconded by Councilor Merkel. All those in favor? All those opposed? Let the matter, let the record reflect itself, four hands plus my own. Is that it?
That's all I had on the schedule in front of me, so. And then tomorrow is the, the school and the, uh, the short-term, the short-term transfer, authorization, I should say, and then I think that's it.
I want to thank you.
Oh, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair.
The, but, I was a little leery at first with the budget, because it's not laid out the way I was, you know, I'm accustomed to, but it was, once I got used to it, it was, uh, it's very well done. And for the record, my son works in Beverly, and when I came home and brought the budget and dropped it on the counter, he asked me what that was. And I told him, and he looked at me and said, "Dad, it's like a thousand pages long." I go, "I know." And so, I mean, it just speaks volumes to the continued work that your department has done with the administration, to making sure that this is totally transparent. I mean, uh, there's some things that you have to figure out how to navigate your way through, which is a thousand-page document, you're going to have to, someone's, you figure it out, but for the most part, I just want to say it's excellent, and you did a real nice job.
Thank you. Wow, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you for working with us and putting and asking all our questions, because, um, is the, the makeup of the council is a very young, energetic council with a lot of, uh, first-time people that have a lot of questions, and you answered, and the department heads answered their questions very well, so they give a basic understanding of why things work the way they do and how things are funded the way they are, and, and you rose to the task, but you didn't bring your assist, you didn't bring the deputy with you tonight. I'm a little leery.
No, he had a.
Did we scare him away?
Had a prior conflict, I, I confirmed, but I believe he'll be here tomorrow night. I just.
Okay.
Just wanted to say thank you so much for your kind words, and to, um, thank the committee and the council, and, um, with your flexibility and with the fact that we changed the format a little bit, and we're working to maybe take, do a little bit of tinkering on the edges to make it, you know, the mayor wants the budget to be as transparent as possible, we care a lot about engaging the community on, in this, and so want to make it as easy to digest a thousand-page document as it can be.
I mean, what is it, 14 years in a row with the budget award?
Yes, we've won the, for the GFOA, I guess.
It's 14 years in a row, and obviously, you take the recommendations from, you know, all the different, um, people that review the budget, and, you know, take their recommendations to heart to make it the way it should be, so, uh, I give you a lot of credit, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take one last motion. Council Hapworth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, motion to adjourn.
Council Hapworth moves to adjourn. All those in favor? All those opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you, Council Watson Felth.